Please rise and bring this meeting to order. Please salute the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Hamel, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Semenaro?
Here.
Ms. Hamel here. Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. McGlocklin. Mr. Prox. Is it Ms. Trodowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
And Mr. Beal.
Here. Under announcements, are there any edits to the agenda by board members?
None from the administration.
Okay, seeing none. One announcement, we'll have an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel.
And litigation.
And litigation. Also, if you would like to have a comment on what's going on tonight, please approach the microphone, state your name and address. Having said that, are there any public comments on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I have a very short report this evening. Typically in September, we're just getting school rolling. So just for everyone's information, we're already into our third full week of school. So far, everything's running smoothly. All of our extracurricular activities are in full swing and basically, everything's running very smoothly. So I really don't have much beyond that. Transportation seems to be in order. Everything else is going well.
I did get a, an email from the constituents saying that there was an issue with a bus run in the morning, some students being dropped off.
Yeah, that actually was worked out.
It was worked out.
Yes, we took care of that.
So how's that?
Is that the, which one is it? Because I know there was a...
My understanding was there was, you know, there was a bus run and the kids were dropped off early before school opened and then there was like a double run situation where they had to go back out and get the next load of kids to...
If you want to forward that to me, I haven't heard anything about that one. We had, like I said, we had a few blips, but I thought we took care of all of them. So if there's something else, I'll check into it.
Okay. Any board comments on the opening days? Okay, seeing none, curriculum and instruction?
We had a curriculum and instruction meeting last Wednesday evening. I was unable to attend that due to the being present at the Amity Township Meeting on a bridge issue. And Mrs. Torscha was there and ran that meeting. In Mr. Shaheen's absence tonight, I'm going to ask Mrs. Torscha to report out as to some of the things that were discussed at that meeting. Mrs. Torscha, if you wouldn't mind taking the floor, please.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Great.
(inaudible)
Mr. Kurtz, could you...
I think you covered it.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board on curriculum and instruction?
No.
Okay. Any public comments? All right, seeing none. Move on to buildings and grounds.
Item A, we can cover that again under finance since he made an appearance, or we had a...
We might as well talk about it now.
Okay. I'll start it, then. Just for the benefit of the public, we had Mr. Capifari attended our finance committee meeting last Thursday to discuss some of the leasing options that we may want to enter into if we alter, if the board ultimately decides to lease space to the River Rock Academy at APC. That's still my recommendation moving forward. Obviously, I need board support to do that. Board members had a chance to ask a lot of questions of Mr. Capifari, who was there, a lot of them not having to do with the finances of it, but with some of the concerns that were brought out by the public regarding safety and issues like that. So I'll let any of the board members that were there speak to that. But just wanted to update you on that, that we're continuing to move forward with that whole process.
I think from a finance perspective, I think the questions that come up were, one, we were still looking to get examples of leases that they have with other school districts that were probably more geared towards a blended model, which would include not only placements, they would take a certain number of placements from us, where our kids right now are currently going to other schools similar to River Rock. And so that would be a cost avoidance for the school district, both in terms of transportation and in terms of these placement costs. And then two, maybe a price per square foot that they would actually pay us in terms of leasing the facility. And maybe some common area maintenance expense added to that. But we have yet to see some sample contracts that they have with the other school districts. So once we do, and our goal is to have those...
We'll have those rather soon.
Rather soon.
Before, I would like to have them within, I think in the next two weeks.
Okay.
For initial review.
I think we could get those before the board for our September meeting, voting meeting, that would be helpful. So we could have some discussion along those lines. And the finance committee meets again September 23rd. Is it the 23rd?
25th.
25th. So our goal is to have a discussion about those leases at that time as well. And I think that's pretty much it from a, from a finance perspective. In terms of some of the concerns that the public expressed in terms of safety, the gentleman went through a whole host of different things that they do to, to the safety of their students, as well as the public at large. And quite frankly, the licensing that they have for this particular facility did not, is not for students that have, I don't know what the medical term is...
Psychiatric.
Yeah, but wasn't there a particular nomenclature used by the state that he referred to?
When it comes to juvenile, adjudicated juvenile delinquents as well.
Correct. So neither one of those types of populations would be housed in this facility. They don't have the licensure for that here. And I think of the 17 or 18 schools that he rattled off that they do have, only one of those is licensed for that.
That's correct. And that's not in this area.
It was in York or some other place like that. And that's really, was there anything else you guys can think of from that?
As far as...
Yeah, just from a facilities discussion or even finance.
From a facilities discussion, just some of the things that we learned from speaking with him was to address the safety concerns specifically. Talked about having very low student to staff ratio. They don't allow any cell phones whatsoever in the building. They have a wand, everyone is wanded before they enter into the building. No backpacks are allowed in the building. They can carry their lunch in, but pretty much no other bags can get carried into the building.
And those are searched.
They do searches from grade six to 12. They do random searches in the building. They have behavioral managers on site, which for the most part, he said, are retired police officers. And they're not there to put fear into the kids. They're there as sort of more of a positive influence, to work with them and be more of a friendly presence, instead of a threatening presence. Their dismissal schedules are timed to not be near our dismissal schedule, so there's no interaction going on there. They're not allowed to drive to school. There are buses that take them back and forth. It just goes on and on and on. We've asked about any kind of incidents in the past that have occurred in other, you know, in other facilities, not so much in the facility itself, but anything that might have happened after school hours. And there have been none, they seem to be a really top-notch organization.
And he encouraged people to do their own research in Google, whatever records they thought were necessary, actually encouraged folks to even take a look at the police records within the municipalities in which they work, if they felt that that was an issue. So they're very thorough in answering the questions.
Do they have a, like, emergency response plan, or if something would happen, that they coordinate with local police? I mean, that was one of the, because the proximity of Amity Elementary to this location, I think the concern... He did mention that they have a relationship with the local, whatever the local police department would be for each of those areas. For us here, I guess it would probably be Amity.
Amity.
Or even the state police, who knows. But they do have some type of...
They foster a relationship with all of, and wherever their sites are, with the local police force. So at some point, if and when they would come in, we would certainly encourage them to reach out to Amity to establish that, that relationship.
Sure, I would think the proximity of...
That helps.
Of the Amity Police Station right across the street, basically, from the school, is also...
Well, he said that in other locations, it's nothing for the police officers to just drop in, you know, at different times to see what's going on.
And actually encourage it, again, as part of this issue of the police being a positive role model for these kids. Not so much as a security thing, but it's nice, it goes hand in glove with that, but it was more of, they wanted, you know, the police there as part of a positive experience for the children.
I think that when we decide to move forward, that we have some frequently asked questions that we put on the website regarding this, because we don't have a lot of public participation here, but the questions will come up again.
Absolutely.
And if we have something, you know, to, to Semenaro's point, I mean, all these questions we're asked and answered, you know, maybe take the top 10, put them on there, and how they're going to handle something that's beneficial.
Well, I... I'm sorry, that is a good idea, one. Two, the meeting was recorded as part of the finance committee meeting, and so we can, you know, it's out there and available for the public to listen to. And as part of the meetings for that minute, the minutes for that meeting. And three, he did also extend to the board to have it in open house, October...
I think it's the 11th.
11th.
We'll get the date for sure.
Where the board can come out, it's a weekday, I believe.
The one that they just opened in Wilson.
From 11 to 2 or something like that, they'll serve lunch, you can come out, you can ask questions, see what's going on with the operation, that sort of thing. And it's at, it is at Wilson. And he also mentioned that every single, everything, I'm pretty sure he said, every single school that they have is in a former school building of some kind or another. So it's not like they're opening these things up in a commercial shopping center or something like that. So the concerns that we were raising were concerns that they've run into in the past. He said in one community, I guess when they first started, you know, people were coming out in droves, you know, to oppose it because they didn't understand what it was that they did. And then later, and he was like, these same people are the ones that would support the school, you know, this school before the board would vote to get rid of it. So they have lots of ice cream parties and, you know, different things that they do to, you know, to engage the community and support community events and things of that nature. So they become, in his words, "part of the fabric of the community," and they're here to support the community as well. So it was a, it was a great opportunity for the board to interact with him directly and ask specific questions. And I would encourage other board members, if they have the time to attend the open house, that they go.
We also discussed at that meeting the prospect of actually having Mr. Capifari come to a full meeting, like, although there are not a lot of people here tonight, but to a meeting with the full board to have maybe the same kind of conversation, just so people can ask questions to get the word out. So...
We wanted to back, back that up a little bit, like, to the point where we, from a financial perspective, understood, you know, what the deal terms were and what would be advocated to us as a school and our district, you know. And try to get that all in place before we wasted anyone's time having to come here and talk to us all again. We can't make a deal, so why do it?
Okay.
So we'll move forward with the financial end of it, hopefully by the end of this month, and then...
Well, by the 25th, for sure.
Well, if, right, yes, absolutely. That's what I meant by, by the time we meet at that meeting.
Right. Okay. Next is facilities committing, committee meeting.
First Monday of October, whatever date that is. See, do you have a calendar there? That will be our, we'll advertise that, but that's our normal meeting time for facilities. And I know we did schedule October 7th. So we will be having a facilities committee meeting. C and D, I put out to the board for discussion regarding the $30 processing fee and the student parking fee of $50.
Right. So as I understand these issues, these are recommendations made by the Revenue Enhancement Committee last May in conjunction with the activity fee discussion. And I was under the impression that we'd adopted these things, but apparently, we officially didn't take a vote, and so they're up now for discussion and a vote.
The parking fees, that's what students currently do not have a parking pass and are going to purchase one?
That would be up to the board, depending on what you decide.
The people already have the $20, or bought their $20 parking pass, you're not going to go back to those same people and say, "We would like $30 more."
I guess that's up for discussion.
That, exactly.
Because then you, then somebody might say, "Well, $50, here, I'm giving like $20 back."
Yeah, I don't think we can do that. Next year, I mean, the ship has sailed. Would have been nice to have implemented that, but it's too late, in my opinion.
I think you can implement it from people that are signing up in November, you know, whatever this would go into.
I don't know what the process is of... Mr. Henkel, would you mind approaching the microphone for, I do want to make the board aware of what happened with the actual $20 fee this year in terms of revenue that we have produced, because Mr. Henkel did change a few things from the way Mr. McElmough had done it. Tom, do you want to speak to that, please?
I didn't hear it exactly.
About how...
What's the process for, what's the process for getting a parking pass?
The students have now, they have the application form for a life, where it has just standing there, so that's a waiting for that. Now, in years past, last year, I think, the office, the fee structure was already in place, and incentive program was already in place, which expressed this student's desire spring. And what, last year, 126 of them, this is true part of the organization, 2012, 2013. Of those, 126, 67 of them were free due to PSSA incentives that were given out to students through, through this, this record. There are seven of those part of the passes, 37 of them were reduced to $10 based on the same incentive to the PSSA, now aware that that could be taken. And 22 were at full price of $20. So you had $1,200, $2,200, $1,200, somebody else, because that was left here. So looking at this year as of today, we have sold, and we see 110 parking permits for a total of $2,200, which is a thousand dollars more than last year. If we were to do the exact same number, we would be looking at possibly $20,200, which is 110 increase to last year's fee. All right, giving it $20.
That's eliminating the incentives. The way you did that was you eliminated the incentives that used to be in place.
$20, whether it's May, July, November, March, $20 for parking permits. Mrs. Rexford worked with Mr. Smith, number, 189 parking spaces, basically, for a kind of number. So the student gets a parking pass with a specific number. And what we had discussed very formally is the process by which to consequences for those students who park illegally, park without. We do have a going policy. We've reached out to other school districts with X amount of schools or somewhere, 2 or 3 written notifications in Paris. And after that, there is a payment of $10, $20. There are 2 other schools that the board approved, told after 2 to 3 written notifications, that they have to disclose the fact that you see that, and then those were, that has been approved by, has been approved. So that's what we were asking.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Henkel? Okay, thank you, Mr. Henkel.
I'd just like to say, I, in the, I've heard that in the past, the fee, the vehicles haven't been patrolled, see if they have parking passes on them. So some students have been able to park for free. So if we can just make sure we are checking that, particularly in the winter. I heard that people just don't go out and check to see if the passes are on. So if we could just be aware of that, it would be helpful.
We'll take care of that.
Okay, so, you know, we have, we have this idea of increasing the parking fee to $50. And we've heard from one board member who says, you know, that ship has sailed for those who've already purchased, the 110 students, we've already purchased it. Any other thoughts?
I agree. I wouldn't object to having it apply to anybody that...
Going forward?
Going forward.
Okay.
Because there's some people that don't get their driver's license until the spring.
Right. Okay, any other...
And we're not at capacity.
Well, clearly not. We've got another 79 spaces to go. What about this idea of... Mr. Henkel, you guys already, are you implementing this plan of warning notices and to parents and fines, or...
We could throw that into the motion.
(inaudible) discussing, regarding the consequence of the policy, and your opinion.
Right.
Are you thinking about adding it to the motion?
(inaudible) effective immediately, after the first, and then in the school year, you just let me give me a date, and that will be taken care of the way it's done.
Yeah, I mean, I think you would put, you'd put a warning system in with a fine, and if it's, if the fines are ignored, then you would eventually have to tow a vehicle, particularly for the parking in places that it's problematic. I don't see how you'd treat this any differently than any other type of community. Or you'd have, you'd vest that power to the administration, they can use their discretion.
You want to add to that motion, if you're going to...
We don't have a formal motion as of yet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I don't know, what...
One of those are, I know we have some systems in place, like kids are doing with an attorney book or something, they won't get their diploma until that's...
Correct.
Is it the same with having late...
Parking fine.
Do you, do you hold the parking fees as an obligation?
Yes, absolutely.
I was going to say, because if you didn't, if there's no penalty in paying, not paying the fine, you can park there forever. See, man, what is the power to tow, to get somebody's attention? All right, so I guess the only other thing then would be a point of implementation, we'd want to give effective immediately, 30 days' notice, 2 weeks' notice.
As far as the finer, as far as the increase...
Everything, I guess.
The parking permits are rolling. So as he said, if you turn driving age later in the year, so the sooner you do that, the sooner we'll collect $50.
Make everything effective October 1st?
I think that's reasonable.
Depending on our vote.
Well, we'd vote tonight.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I would say effective immediately.
Okay, so if I could, if I could get a motion from somebody to articulate what we just discussed, which would be?
I'd have a motion that if the student parking fee immediately on our, tomorrow, you change to $50.
Okay. Anything about towing, or...
I would do it separately. I mean, do we have to...
You don't.
We're doing anything we want, I was just trying to...
It would probably make sense for us to, we'd probably just have a fine, too, right? We can't just say, "Fine, we got the same amount."
Yes, you would, right. We don't want to be...
You want to do it as separate motions, maybe?
I know we're making a motion, so how would you want to...
Unless, unless you want to...
Yeah, I think we'll keep it as a separate issue, because we want to see something in writing as far as how, how it's going to be implemented. So it's going to be a warning first, a fine, you know, and then what detention would...
How about if you give us a couple of days to work that part out, we'll bring it back for the September, end of the month vote.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine with me. So with this motion...
This is immediate.
You're making a motion to increase immediately following our approval tonight, or tomorrow?
Effective September 10th.
An increase to $50 for anyone who has not yet paid. Correct. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. I'll second that.
Okay. We have first and second. Any additional discussion?
Can you restate the motion, please, a little bit louder?
Ms. Hamel, you want me to do that? You got it, or you want me to... The motion was to immediately increase the student parking fee to $50 from $20, effective September 10th, for any and all students who have not yet paid for a parking permit. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. If there's no further discussion, come and get a roll call and vote, please.
The motion was, motion by Mr. Wolf, seconded by Mr. Sermonaro. Mr. Sermonaro?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
No.
Ms. Tordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. And I think on a separate issue, then, you guys will come back to us on the voting meeting with a policy put forward for, or just an administrative guideline or something on...
Fining and towing.
What the fining and penalties and towing would be.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The second issue here is the approval of a $30 processing fee for the facilities use form. So this was discussed last year, too, via the REC. It was a recommendation made by the Revenue Enhancement Committee to the Board, but the Board failed to vote on it. So...
Make the motion to institute a $30 processing fee for facilities used.
We have a second. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none, did you get the motion, Connor?
Can you restate it again?
There's a motion to instill a $30 processing fee for a facilities use form.
Okay. Thank you.
This is like a application.
Pretty much.
So this, if you had a nonprofit, they would have to fill this up one time?
Well, if it...
So if you had the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts, they would, they were going to pay with speed, they'd pay it one time?
Well, my understanding, and Mrs. Hamel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the intent was anytime someone had to touch a new form, it was a $30 fee.
So basically, processing and handling fee.
So this would happen each time?
But that doesn't prevent somebody from coming in, which we frequently see when we're approving agenda items, somebody coming in saying, well, I would like to reserve this facility on 17 different dates. And then they're just, they're paying for one, it's one form.
Just one form, per time you use the form. Not per event.
Yeah. But if they're going to come in and do it 17 separate times, well, then they're going to face...
Is it better to have your act together and have all your dates?
Exactly.
And this is just the facilities use form, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have a first, and we have a second.
Motion by Mr. Sermonaro, second by Mr. Wolf. Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Ms. Tordowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Sermonaro?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Concludes my buildings and grounds report. Okay. Any public comment?
Thank you, members of the Central.
I'm sorry, could you speak up just a little bit?
Thank you, members of the Central. If you'd like to, I have a drink tomorrow, and I'm going to hit some extra five cards, and they go, turn around, because they're $12, not $50. No, it's a good response. They have to Friday, if they come out, and perhaps the next week, they could come back.
Motion was made and passed.
Because the fact that they're beginning, I just give it to you, you're like, oh, I didn't know. I didn't know, they may not be involved, but... I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. Because I think, God, it's going to be a bad start.
Well, may I ask, how many, I understand what you're saying, but are we expecting a mad rush for parking passes tomorrow?
Every day, someone has to make a decision, because they're trying to figure out, they're doing things, like, there was the initial rush, and it's turning out people are looking through, and now it's the, okay, I have the extra $100, my parents have the $20, and I gave my money to the office to get a parking pass. So there will be one, there will be people that are, just one of those things that, if you might get one, you can try and get one together, really, build a thing up, and then what about now, my parents, my next week's going to do the meeting, but it's something that's happening, there are, you know, and, you know, a little, they didn't even know tomorrow, you know, give them a bit of notice, if you put it on the website, if they, you know, put it on the website, and say, this is going to be a crazy pass on this Friday, and give them a little notice, and the backlash might be a little bit less, and there's dangers associated, and maybe they won't be crazy, you know, there's only that people, but I think the community, I know the students are going to be shocked tomorrow, they go to the office, and that's why I created $50, this year, this past...
Yeah. I don't want to tell you, I mean, the Board would have to take another vote, because the vote was what it was. I tried to clarify, you know, a start date, but it, the start date was immediately, so the fact that it goes up tomorrow.
I think we'll see what tomorrow does.
Could Mr. Hankel go, can I connect that process now?
He technically could, except we need him here in a little while, so.
Okay.
We could even do it later tonight.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
I have a question about school coming possibly to the...
I'm sorry, could you speak up, sir?
Is that a question about the kids coming to the primary possibly to the, River Rock?
River Rock. Yes.
What kind of kids are we talking about, what are they, in charge for that?
Well, Dr. Otto addressed that. I don't have the exact nomenclature for...
Usually, they're experiencing some kind of adjustment to the regular school environment. They could be students who are either labeled with a learning disability, maybe some kind of emotional, social adjustment problem, or just students who are not, who have maybe been removed from the school environment by the administration or the Board, won an expulsion for some offense that they committed against, major offense against breaking school rules. So the gamut of the type of student that you will see runs those kinds of things.
My other question, so are we not talking about kids that have been currently in motion and are in school?
No, no. When we met with the gentleman who represents this company, they do have one school that is specifically staffed to deal with what they call adjudicated delinquents. That's not what we're looking at. They are applying, and you have to understand, they're a separate entity, they're just using our building, but obviously, we want to make sure it's safe. They have to apply to the State Department of Education for a license that meets certain requirements, for an approved kind of, and I don't want to say approved private school, because that's another entity, but they have a private licensing that they actually have to go through in order to be approved as a site.
All right. So all of that, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments?
I think the board has a, retaining, or maybe more, with these students, making away their education, you're paying away curriculums, and charging for passing a weekend to possibly, you're available, not in these kids, not even for us to acknowledge, you have, you have students that are in football, that already have $100,000 or so, their body of activity, make sure my, to learn, to learn from those, but you're going to have students in sports, in band, they're going to need to drive to school. So now, not only are they in an activity, a club team, now they're paying a part, because their parent won't be able to run home, run to the school, pick them up, and bring them back. I think this board keeps taking important things away from the students. You're looking at another college, he's just started taking the bus, now he's only got a 30, 40,000 dollar additional on the bus, because he's driving to drive to school. I think this board is a little harmful job. And even when you're a student, and you're charging for passing a weekend to drive to the bus, you're reducing the student that has a route to school. And I don't know if that's what school is about, it's very, you know, I think what it affects the students is horrible.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cockle, but I am going to speak to some of the issues that you brought up. Okay? Just so you understand, we do have buses that run with seats empty in our school district. And by implementing a parking fee for a permit, which is a privilege at the school, you know, maybe what we're doing is we're incenting those students to ride the bus. Okay? And we do have to hold those seats open to those students, regardless of whether they take the bus or not. Okay? Because what happens in the winter, when they decide they're not going to drive that day, and they want to ride the bus, that seat better be available to them. I personally don't think that an extra $30 on a parking fee, permit, is excessive. I mean, children are paying for gasoline, they're paying for oil changes, they're paying for car insurance, car maintenance of all the different types. You know, the more they drive the car, the more frequently they have to incur those expenses. I don't think an extra $30, I mean, that's only a couple of gallons of gas, is a hardship for students to pay, if that's what they want to do, in terms of getting to school and back on their own. In terms of the discussion you're having, in terms of this board nickel and diming the students, or the parents, or whoever, I understand, I look at this, and I see $2,200 this year, potentially $2,900, versus $1,200. I don't see dollars here, I see a sport, I see an activity. I see something else that's been saved by the additional revenue that's been generated, that otherwise may have to go in a budget crunch. And, you know, we've thoroughly looked at our activities and the costs of the stipends for those activities, and that's somebody's stipend for a year. So do we get rid of a language club, or do we get rid of some other activity, or do you charge a parking fee? You know, I look at it this way, if it pays for an activity that supports a whole bunch of different students, then it's worthwhile, because we have to keep the activities that this board is considering to cutting every single year for the last three years. That's my personal take on it. I understand and I appreciate where you're coming from. It's not with relish that this board sits up here and makes these decisions, but if I have to make a choice, this is, I think, a better choice than getting rid of a program that we otherwise can keep by keeping these fees in place.
Correct. There's other points of income, other passive students. You're choosing not to take any kind of, sort of, true, direct, and, if you only were dealing with a sport, it's all passive students. You're not looking at any of the income.
I disagree with you. We're looking at marketing. We're looking at marketing, we're looking at, we've asked for donations, for fundraising, all kinds of different things.
Foundation.
Hmm?
Start the foundation.
Yeah, we started a foundation, we contributed money to a foundation to get that up and running, so we can help support the programs in this school district. You know, I think we're looking at all different options that are available to us to support this school.
Okay. Your actions, speed, you know.
Okay. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to finance.
Item A is the normal course approvals that will come forward as we have any. Item B is, the Finance Committee met last Thursday, had a rather extensive meeting, covered quite a bit. I'm going to turn it over to the Chair, Mr. Basil, if you want to take it.
We already discussed the River Rock issue. We had the Food Services Corporation, Sodexo, in, and they were talking about their plans for monitoring our meal plan on a much more closely, close basis than they had in the past, in particular, à la carte servings. We're trying to get a handle on the number of meals that we're serving throughout the year, because obviously, that supports the cafeteria funds. They're looking to incentivize folks to buy more breakfasts, and therefore, offer breakfast on a more frequently base, more frequent basis. I think they had eliminated half-days and some other things, but they see that as a place where they can bring that service back. We discussed our debt service, and we're just underneath the $90 million mark at this point, in terms of our overall debt. One of the options that was brought forward for discussion as a way of, I guess, leveraging our debt going forward in terms of budget considerations, was to make a series of scoop payments, which essentially is deferred payment. You don't make the payment, your debt payment, this year with the following year, and you lump those payments into the amortization schedule going forward. So instead of spending $7 million in debt service this year, you would divide that amongst the balance of your term for the remaining amount of the term. So you might spend 7.2 or 7.3 million on your remaining debt service payments annually going forward, until you, and it's a way of essentially just pushing off what is due today and paying it tomorrow, if that helps you accommodate some sort of budget objective. I think the tenor of the Finance Committee was that that was not something that we were willing to entertain at this time, although it was helpful to have that option on the table as a consideration for this board going forward when we discuss budgets in the future. We did get a look at the five-year budget model, and some of the assumptions that were placed into it. I asked the administration to forward that model to the entire Board. It's an Excel spreadsheet, so we'll get that out to you guys, so you can see it, and you can play with the numbers and see how it works. It's a pretty simple model, but I think it'll be helpful to understand or to use in terms of our budget discussions going forward. A, if we do this, this is how it's going to affect our budget for the next three to five years. If you do that, this will be the consequence. So it'll be a little bit easier to see the net effect of those decisions going forward. Last, we went through basically a preliminary autopsy of the budget of 1213. The school district essentially threw a $700,000 surplus. I think of note in there was building supplies was one of the larger ticket items, that what we had budgeted more than what we spent, we believe, in large part, that was a result of the budget freeze that was put in place. However, our business office said that they're going to take a closer look this year in terms of assembling the budget, on how those dollars have been allocated in the past and going forward, how those numbers being created at the building level and pushed up, so that we're forecasting those expenses a little bit more accurately in the future. Our rate of collection was up slightly in local revenues, correctly, was 98 point, 95.8 versus 95.1 percent, which doesn't seem like a lot, but it was, you know, approximately, you know, another couple hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue that we had not anticipated. And last but not least, like last year, we have instructed the administration to get back to the Finance Committee's meeting in November with a balanced budget. So...
Here we go again.
We should have that at the Finance Committee in November, and ready for Board discussion in December. And it was, oh, one other thing that came up. We had a large, a long discussion about student activities. Our understanding that we've, student activities are being funded in a variety of different ways. So the school district funds a certain portion of these activities. We pay for the stipends, we pay for transportation, we pay for supplies and equipment and things of that nature. And in conjunction with that, you have boosters organizations that are also going out and fundraising and providing support that way. And then there's a third source of financing that's coming into play, and that seems to be parents and students who are going out and fundraising on their own, independent of the boosters organizations.
Through their teams.
Individually, for their individual teams. And at some point in time, a series of accounts have been established for these individual sports, and the concern is that, I guess it's been expressed by parents, and certainly I have a concern as a Board member on this, is that there's no accounting for these funds. And that could create a Title IX issue for the school district, in the sense that if a certain number of dollars are being raised for a sport that's all girls, and it's not an equal, there's not parity for a boys' sport, you could run into a Title IX issue, and vice versa. A lot of money is being raised for a boys' sport, and it's being spent on that boys' sport, and there's not parity when it comes to a girls' sport, again, the school district gets into a Title IX issue. And so it's something that the Finance Committee has directed the administration to get a handle on. So we've asked them to find out exactly how much money is being spent in these individual sports, both not only by the school district, but by the boosters organizations and these individual fundraisers. How much money is being raised? Somebody needs to be accounting for all this money, you know, in terms of tax returns and things of that nature, that need to be reported to the IRS. And who are the signatories on these accounts, who's handling the money, so that we have a better understanding of exactly what's going on there. And then what we'd like to do is bring in all the stakeholders, the sports boosters presidents, or the music boosters presidents, and those individuals, the coaches who are involved in these decisions in terms of what's being purchased, and when, and how much these things cost, and get everybody involved, so we have a better sense of what's happening and what's the best method forward in addressing these issues. So there's a little bit more accountability, and not only to, from the school district's perspective, but also to the parents and the students who are doing all this fundraising. I think that pretty much sums it up, unless somebody else had anything they want to add from it. Okay? Do you have any questions, Mr. Wolf? You and Mr. Kurtz were the only two not there, out of this group.
No. The only, I have one question, unrelated to the Harbor Castle property in Birdville. They were, as I understood, on a payment plan. Have they been keeping up with that plan for their back tax?
I would need to check on that. I do know that they, I believe there was still some issue with the K O Z there, but I will check to see if they made their payments, and then I will email you on that.
Okay. Mr. Kurtz, did you have any questions?
I do not. I'm going to listen to the tape when I get a chance.
Okay. Any public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel.
Under personnel, there's really, that list will grow, based on issues that, not issues, names that come forward for different personnel actions. Just want to point out, B1, small b, that's a correction from a previous agenda, so that's why you see what's worded in parentheses there. Just want to make sure we get that right for that individual. That's not giving anyone any more than they should have, that's just making a correction. Beyond that, that's it. Personnel, really very short list right now.
Any questions from Board members?
Yeah, I went back last, last year, August and September, and looked at the volunteer list that we had approved, and we had a little over 17 at this point, and we're just about 80. We're right at about 80 this year. I have a feeling this is related to the change of which, if somebody could tell me how we got back to the old way of, we used to come in to the district office, and we got our background check right there, it's $4, you walked in, you walked out, half hour with the badge. What changed, and I'm sorry if this is already covered, what changed if we went back to this process?
Mrs. Torche, do you want to, since you handle this on a daily basis?
What has changed is that we have been interpreting, the volunteer policy is vast. And part of it says, if you do this, and then you refer to it, it says, you're going to be shadowed outside of the school, you should have your parents. So we've been defining practice of policy of, if you're outside of our building, and you're a lone student, you need to have a current background check to protect your home place. If you're inside a building, you're under watch of a teacher, you're working in the classroom, you can commit a fracture, and apply to the volunteer, do the volunteer application, that, that hasn't changed. We've strengthened the... It strengthens the, the ability to do it without having to, you know, have a background check.
So if you're, if you're not, the evening, I understand, if you're taking kids on chaperoning and taking on a class trip, and it's just like a few parents and a teacher, you would need the child abuse, that whole...
True, you're going to have a background check and a child abuse.
But if you're, if you're just volunteering for the, like, sports...
If you're driving the, the, you put them on the field to, to, you don't have a background check, you only get a volunteer parent's ID. You're just starting in some role, but you're not a regular student. You're riding with class of students, and you're going to be responsible for that student that's not riding, might be going to the bathroom facilities alone with that student, might be on chaperones somewhere with that student, working at a, you think you should probably have parents to protect that child.
So if you're, if you're interacting with the students?
If you're going to work, you're okay. If you're, if you're, if you're in this position, and other people are okay with it, if you're, if you're doing anything where you could be alone with that child, with a group of children, I'm, I was trying to reinforce the policy saying, out of school, small groups, working in some capacity as a chaperone, taking students to the classroom, you should have your parents. Okay? Cool.
Can I add something? Also, Mr. Wolf, some people who applied last year are still in that year, so they don't have to apply again yet this year. So they have their...
You know, you look at the task, and you simply come into the district office, and you're in and out in less than a half an hour. Now, you know, the stuff we sent to the state, they said it can take three weeks to get back. So, you know, it seems like, I'm fearful that it, we don't want to make it so daunting in the task to become a volunteer that people don't do it, as long as they understand there's differentiation between a volunteer, you're, you're pushing equipment out, or you're, you're holding the water bottles for the football team or what have you. There's a difference between that type of volunteer and someone's going to take a class trip to Europe, and they're accompanying the class. There's, there's a big distinction between that, and I don't know that a lot of people understand that there is a difference between, it's not all or nothing, it's, if you're going to do one, you have to go through these extra steps, if you're going to do the other one, that you don't really need that.
The administration has had in contract, multiple people have been assigned, and there really hasn't been a problem. The other thing is that, along with, once you have your parents, you're good for the whole year. If you stay and maintain that as a volunteer as long as you're able to stay, and you volunteer for the year, you're, you will automatically be, grand daughter of a whole inch at that home here, not without having to get in there, much like the little state that brought us, our substitute teachers, and if you can use substitute, probably like one, one time a year, because the little states that they're okay with at all. So we're, we're trying to near that process.
Okay, so as long as, you just want to be a volunteer, you can come in, you can still get the, the raptor check, and you get your little badge updated, that, that...
I just wanted to add, the, the staff in the office, as she said, she, she used the word vast, our, our volunteer policy is rather complicated in terms of trying to delineate what you just pointed out, and we felt that there might be some, too many loopholes in it, so for the safety of kids, we wanted to tighten it up.
No, it's fine. I think it's a great idea, it could never be too safe with that, with that, it's just you don't, you know, think, you know, from the booster organizations, I think they, they have to make it a little bit better, make it more aware to the people that there's, you don't really need to go through this whole criminal background and the child section of it, when you're just going to do this little thing in the public forum. So I think that's understandable.
Good question. Any other board comments, personnel? Okay, any public comments on personnel? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to programs.
Monthly enrollment report, as you know, board members, every year we share with you the number that we have to report to PDE. That becomes our official enrollment number for that year. Obviously, it can fluctuate, but interestingly enough, if you remember last January, we projected enrollment based on the APC closing. The number that we put in that report was 3,650 that we projected. We actually opened the year 3,659, so I, I think that's a pretty good projection in terms of where we actually wound up. You have, the report has the different numbers of grades per building or students per grade per building. The only word of caution, and it's not a real strong word of caution, the grade one and two classes at AEC are hovering around 25 each. So we, we think we can manage that, but if it would get any bigger, we would certainly want to at least keep you updated on that. Under the monthly student data report, that's the new report the board has asked us to put together with students and placements here, there, and everywhere. So since it's the first month of the year, we don't have anything to report, we're compiling that data, and from October forward, then you will have a, a monthly report that will give you the, the statistics, basically the same way we did it last year. So there's nothing to report at this point, we're putting that together. Item C and D, both of these are just one for discussion at this point, since there is, they've been submitted, but the amount is the same for the accountability block grant. Mrs. Torshie, about 154,000 where it's been for the last three or four years, and you would approve that once that's been reviewed by the state and released, and the federal programs consolidated application is Title I. That's about $100,000 less, I'm sorry to report. That's, I think, based on some of the sequestration issues with the federal government, that's federal money. So as soon as those are released and approved, we will have them in front of you for approval as well.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public?
[inaudible].
Yeah, you're back on finance. You wanted to save this till the end?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. Any other?
I have a quick comment on programs. When we talk about class size numbers, can we also talk about the number of students who attend on the average day? Because even if there's 25 kids assigned to a class, does that mean that 25 are in attendance most days, or are 23 in attendance, or 24?
The best way I can answer that, I'm sorry to interrupt, go ahead. The best way...
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead and answer, please.
Well, I, I think it's a quick answer. We average about a 95% attendance rate district-wide, and I think it's a little higher at the elementary. So you could take that number and multiply it by whatever, between 95 and 98% on a daily basis of who would be there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? All right. Moving on to policy.
We'll just need to set an October date. We have...
October 9th. What's that?
Are you sure? We usually were the second Wednesday of the month.
Second Wednesday of, of October, October 9th.
Is that the second Wednesday? I'll take your word. I don't have a calendar in front of me.
October 9th is the second Wednesday. That's what I have in my calendar, I have the policy committee...
We are on.
And that's at 7:00 PM?
It's okay.
Yep. Okay. Any other board member comments? Any comment from the public on policy? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to transportation.
I have no further reports under items 12 through 16.
Does any board member have anything to bring up under 12 through 16? Okay, 12 through 14. Okay, Mr. Cockle.
I'm sorry?
Under public presentation on issues, Mr. Cockle, you had a question for us about finance.
Sorry, my question is, is that matter of course?
Yes.
What is the, what do you, what is the plan, which starts up tomorrow, because I can do, I remember, we've saved it for a cut, when we're busy there?
Well, understand, we're still in the process of completing the audit, so we haven't nailed that number down just yet. There were some accounts payable that had trickled, you know, we're getting paid in August and whatnot that weren't part of the July or June accounting. We think it's around $700,000. I would say that right now that money is sitting in fund balance, okay? And, you know, it's there to be used as the board sees fit going forward through the rest of this calendar year and, and budgeting for the following calendar year, just like any other surplus has been used in the past.
Okay. I guess my other question would be, when you're working on this current budget, and you go through your, 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 this is, whatever, any of the plan, this end game, if this, if we did this amount, we have a $700,000 surplus, you know, in our own, we bring it back, it's a half hour, you have to, you have to, we bring it back to, you know, the normal place here. I think that would, I think that would leave a lot of people knowing that if there is a surplus...
I'll answer it.
That some of these programs, maybe I'd say, if there's not a surplus, you guys did your job, and you know, you had to do the best, and you, like, had to do, you know, you're in a surplus. It would be nice for some of this, the fact that you, that you got, that you got a station that you can be here, and that's a little cool surplus. You know, is there already calls about, like, the plan where you have a surplus, you bring it back, you know, just like I mentioned about the, any of the, you mentioned earlier about, you know, the use of the market, a half hour, you know, how do you, you guys like, put it back to the normal places?
My, my thought on that whole thing is, again, as part of finance, we're still trying to sort all that out.
Right.
Exactly why it happens, is the number accurate? Is it a one-time anomaly? Is it something that we can question for, for the next year? But if there is a surplus, if there is, does have to be a surplus for life, and if there's, it's there to help, if anything, shorten that budget gap that we're going to have for to that, with this coming budget, as opposed to bringing something back. I mean, we already know we're going to want to be in a hole, and if we do have a surplus, that's great, and we can start plugging that hole without having to eliminate anything else, as opposed to bringing something back.
That would be, is my great way to start out the year, if we weren't talking to the public about kindergarten, and we already had that money in the surplus to keep kindergarten? I'd look at, in fact, that would be, you know, what, that would be, you have to, you have this money that's, you know, that was left over, to continue to use it in planning, and then set that aside for something that's really important, for, for activities for, you know, kindergarten, you put those, those families over the coal, actually, you keep basic planning, like, like Mark and Ray call before we finally go to continue fund balance to, you know, take that issue off the table. I think that's something that the board next year is going to need desperately to get through, but...
In the beginning of the year, coming forward, you're going to be so far in the hole, and then you do all these cuts, and then when it comes time for, you know, to say, taxes increase, then it's not that bad. We don't really need the taxes increase, and then everybody made all their cuts, and the taxes increase. There's still a $700,000 surplus, so I think what is happening is, the hole that you guys are saying, isn't as bad, because you really can't be able to pull a $700,000 surplus.
Clearly, that's to, this is Somer Nero's point. Obviously, there's an anomaly that keeps repeating.
Yes, by the time you're...
So you have to get in and dig in to find out, all right, where the anomalies are in the budget process, because $700,000 of a $50 million budget, and it's still, it's an amount of money, but it's a percentage of variance that you should be able to count for in some degree, I think, by paying.
Yeah, is that, is he, is $700,000 of the $700,000 taxes?
Sure. Look, $700,000 is, Mr. Wolf has put it, is our kindergarten program and our extracurriculars. I think we spent 400 and some odd thousand dollars on the half-day program and $300,000 net on our...
That's about right.
Extracurricular program. So the surplus we threw, as he was sort of illustrating to you, the surplus we threw last year for 12-13, we, as a board, can almost say, well, look, you know, maybe that helps pay, that pays the, the bill for 14, 15 activities. And so now we don't have to have that discussion, we're going to talk about other things, clearly, but, you know, maybe that gives the board, and as Frank said, look, you know, it's just, I kind of look at it this way, whatever money we have in our fund balance, that's one of the levers we have, the option of pulling every single year, right? How much of that are we going to spend down? So if we have more money there to spend down, instead of cutting a program, or instead of raising taxes or something else, then that's just, makes it easier for the board and for the public to do. And I think you heard from this board last year, in June, when we said, you know what, we're going to spend more fund balance and bring program back, right? I mean, that's ultimately what the board did. We sat down, said... Well, I think we allocated $2.3 million for this budget year that we're in now, 13-14, and we were at something like 1. something prior to that, 1.9 or something like that. We, we went and put another $300,000 or $400,000 into the budget, and basically, you know, we're, we're hoping that we're, we're spot on here. Now, understand with a budget, it's a budget. There's no guarantees, right? And a $700,000 surplus is a 1.35% variance on a $52 million budget. 1%. It could have gone the other way. So...
I, I just, it's just, seeing there's a trend every year, it was...
Look, I, I'm with you. I, I've got the numbers in front of me, I can tell you what the surpluses were for the last five years and, and the deficits, going back to when I first got on this board six years ago, and, and something we all look at and we all wrestle with. I mean, why on earth would you want to raise taxes or cut a program when you're sitting on a pile of money? We all said that last year, and we all said, well, let's spend the money down first before we continue on that path. But when you're looking at $3.5 million deficits year after year, clearly something's got to go. Yep. Any other public comments on any item? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have one question.
Oh, yes.
To the point of the public, the person that came up to the public about changing the deadline for changing the fees.
Yes.
If we were to make the, do I need to make another motion to just extend the deadline to the close of school?
We'd have to vote on it. Yeah. Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to make a motion and vote as a board to change what we already voted on.
Okay, then I'd like to make that motion to change the effectiveness at the close...
The effective date to the close...
Tomorrow, after...
To the close of business after tomorrow. Okay, so effectively, it would be September 11th, this, it would go into effect.
Yes.
That's the person that voted, now I'll have to bring that back.
And that way, if somebody does show up at the school tomorrow with their money, you know, they'd feel like a sentimental way, but then, given Mr. Hangle and Nick Ed's opportunity, people off, everyone will know that the deadline tomorrow's there, if you come to school with your money, or you pay $3 more on Monday.
Okay, so there's a motion on table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion, Mr. Kurtz?
No. Can you just restate the motion?
The motion is to extend the effective date of the parking permit fee to September 11th as opposed to September 10th.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote?
Motion by Mr. Wolf, seconded by Ms. Tredowski. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Ms. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Shermanero?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. And then Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Let's see, pass.
Okay. Any other board comments? Okay, seeing none, do I get a motion closed? That was first.
Second.
Second, this means, thank you.